Joe Abdella.
Here.
John Bonido, Craig Cava, Victoria Salem. I'm here, Stephanie Pauline, Angela MacRulo, Alex McNaughton.
Here.
Justin Ongley, Jen Pody, Jane Sargent, Pete Tagley, Mary Weber.
I'll turn on my microphone and ask again if there's any public comment on the agenda. I see no hands raised. So we'll, we'll move on. On the consent agenda. Our minutes of the board of decree and minutes of the Board of Education meeting of October 2nd, 2023. I'll ask whether anyone has any additions, corrections, or otherwise want to take an item off of the consent agenda. Yes, Justin?
I'm not sure if it's on there, but for the curriculum and educational programming meeting minutes, they were supposed to be filed attached. I don't know about them yet. It was Teresa, it was the thing that you document. Oh, it is. Okay. Is it up there?
So those had those minutes, those attachments have been put on?
Have they been put on?
Could we make sure that those? Okay. Okay. So yeah, I I think it would help. It was critical to understanding that was in the face. Okay. Anything else on these minutes? If not, they'll remain on the consent agenda and be granted by consent. All right, we'll move on to board chairs with board. I just have a couple of items. I had the privilege, as did Jen, of being a facilitator, an adult facilitator at the Anti-Defamation Assembly that was, that was here at Chappag on October the 11th. This was a, the name of the program, this is one that's been done in the past and done for years called Names Can Really Hurt Us. And it was an absolutely terrific program in which we had a, we had assemblies, we had individual breakout rooms. And this was all about, about students' understanding that I guess the title, Names Can Really Hurt Us. There are ways that we can engage in activities. We can, we could, we might find ourselves in bullying situations and other things. But the whole point is this is a, this has been the mission of the Anti-Defamation League to make sure that we treat people with some respect and decency. And it was an amazing program and you should know that your, that your students were quite good. At least in the breakout room I was in and certainly in the main assembly, we saw them performing well. We saw them showing tremendous courage. A lot of kids gave up and gave accounts of themselves and things that occurred to them and what have you. And you know, to put yourself out there like that, I mean, and there must have been, how many kids did that? At least 50 or 60?
Twenty, I think it was like 23.
Oh, no, it was more than that. 20 on each side. Yeah, there were a line of kids. I'm not sure all of them spoke, but there were, there were lines of kids on each side. And I think it was about 20 odd kids on each side that got on the floor. And so we saw tremendous, and we saw them receive very well. And what we've seen is that some of the kids that had had these issues were grabbed in, for example, seniors at the bonfire. And so we saw acceptance actually come into the schools. I mean, your kids are something else. And yes, very, there's a lot of those kind of events all over the country. They're everywhere. But you know, the kids get into these, this kind of behavior, but here too. But I think that we saw it dawn on a few people as to why this was it, why this was an issue and why this is a concern and we should have and how we should treat people. I was very impressed. I saw demonstrations of empathy and understanding that I never expected. Usually kids at that age are a little bit cynical about certain things, but not on this. They are really good kids. So in any event, I thought that was a tremendous presentation. I'm really glad we had it, but it's, it's only the first step. And it needs to be followed up on. We need to continue reinforcing these kinds of things because this is going to, this generation can really do something. And I'm hoping that this will help. So in any event, I was, I was very, very thrilled to have participated in that. And, and the student coordinator in my breakout session, fortunately, she did all the work. She was great. But no, it was a terrific program. The other thing is on Saturday, I attended the X Science Equine Exposition here at the school. And that was also another tremendous event. We had a lot of kids. We had a lot of outside people and professionals in the field giving information and kids being involved in the process. And it was, it was really terrific. I went to a presentation that was done on, by the people from Little Bridges and that made a particular impression. Because I didn't realize, a lot of the kids that get on these horses are kids that are having specific issues with balance and muscular skeletal, skeletal issues. And when they ride a horse, the interesting thing is these are kids that might even have difficulty walking. But when they ride the horse, the exact same movement with hips and legs is walking. And they're doing, and they're doing it well. And they're excited and they have them do things that engage and they make them do exercises on the horse, but they combine them with games. And so the kids are thrilled to do it. At the end of the day, I think you're sorry to get off the horses, but I'll tell you one thing. These improvements and impacts continue after they're off the horse. So that when you go to a classroom and you might find just sitting in a chair for 20 minutes, you've got to focus on your balance and sitting. Now they can focus on the teacher and the lesson. This is a wonderful program and it is contributing to the aspect of our mission. Because some of these kids are our kids that are involved in this program. And the only little glitch is we have to make sure we get enough access time for Ag students to volunteer for this because the state, you know, has concerns about using our facility for an outside group during the spring or weather seasons. It should be used for things that benefit our Ag Science students. I will tell you, there were volunteer, student volunteers there from the Equine program. And they were engaging and they were really having a terrific time and doing all the things and learning this program and understanding what therapy our animals can provide. Yeah, we might, we might need a program for the motion for everybody in the community, but I'll tell you, it was a grand thing. What I saw was, was just absolutely tremendous. It was a great exposition and it was exciting. And people from out, a lot of people from outside the school here, and they were very impressed with our kids, our program, and of course our conference facilities. So there you go. That was all I had to say. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
All right. Thank you very much. Couple of things I'd like to share. I also had the pleasure of participating in the ADL Names Can Really Hurt Us Assembly. So that was on Wednesday, the Defamation League facilitated a day-long program for students. The goal of the program is to promote inclusiveness and belonging. And the presenters offered strategies to help counter discrimination, exclusion that students experience at schools. Students were educated about the roles that exist in these interactions. That includes really four key definitions. So they explained that students can be targets, perpetrators, bystanders, or allies. And students had opportunities to explore those four dimensions and share stories during panel discussions, small group discussions, and those breakout sessions are very talked about, and then open mic opportunity at the conclusion of the day. We gained valuable insight into some of the difficulties that our students face, including discrimination based on body image, gender, sexual orientation, race, religion, and even zip code. And I gotta say, it was hard to hear some of these stories. It's something that I think opened our eyes. It's something that we're certainly not proud that some of our students have to experience those realities in school. But their courage, I think, should be applauded and that gives us the path forward to helping to cultivate a culture and a climate here at SBS and take the steps to improve that school culture. We want to make sure that we're taking a strong stance against bullying and tolerance. So students feel safe and welcome here at Chappag, no matter who they are or where they come from. I've already had numerous conversations with Don Shells and his team here to talk about what do we do next? How do we support those students? How do we have conversations with our staff? Because I think that it was likely difficult for our staff to hear some of these things as well. And our students were loud and clear in saying that they felt at times that they didn't report some of their experiences, or if they did report them, that they didn't feel that they were taken serious by administration, by teachers. And so this was something that I think was a major takeaway for me to, to really lean into this and say, we can do a better job and we want all of our students to know that they're heard, that we do have their back. We will follow through and keep them safe. And we will work on that to make sure that we do a better job here at SBS. So a really powerful presentation. ADL will be coming back in the future to work with us again. But I think it was a wonderful opportunity to have students really get their voice into the space and share with us some of their experiences. Again, we're not perfect. We're better than a lot, but we still have ways to go and lots of rooms to grow. So it was a great presentation for me and for all that attended. Also, we had an opportunity to finally have homecoming. That was exciting. The rain finally let up just enough for us to get that in. And so Thursday night, we held the annual homecoming bonfire. We had a great turnout and students had the opportunity to have pizza and chili and spend some time with their friends and classmates around the bonfire on a beautiful fall evening. That was followed by a blustery Saturday where we had a boys and girls double header for the varsity soccer teams against Nanawog. While both of our teams failed to bring a victory home that day, they both played hard and it was a great day. And I think everybody had a chance to celebrate with friends and family and we saw some alumni come back and they had a chance to reconnect with some of their friends and maybe talk about their new lives, their way at college and that type of thing. So it was nice to see. And I was glad that this was able to, to come together. One of the things that some people might know is I eat lunch almost every day with seniors here at Chappag. And one of the things they continually tell me is that there's a real desire to have more school-wide events and to bring students together. And that that helps to boost morale and promote school spirit. And so virtually every single lunch session ends with students saying that, that if there's one thing that we can do to improve the school for, for students, it's to have more of those school-wide events. So again, I'll be working with Don and his team to find ways we can do that. Again, I think school spirit is really important to me and I think that it's really important to the kids. So again, excited that we were able to have homecoming. Also wanted to provide a quick update on athletics. The Chappag Fall Teams have had a successful season so far. Homecoming notwithstanding, the boys soccer team got off to a great start. They're currently in first place in the Berkshire League with a 13-1 record. And they won today at Tompinstone and they have tough contests this week against second place teams Nanawog in Northwestern as they continue their quest for a Berkshire League championship. The field hockey team is also having a successful season. They're nine and two and only have one loss in the Berkshire League. The Spartans have found themselves in first place in the league in a tie right now with Watertown. They have games against Northwestern, Nanawog, and Litchfield this week. And if we do well, we have the opportunity to stay on top of the league and continue our winning ways. The golf team has finished the Berkshire League regular season 11-1 and claimed the Berkshire League title along with co-champions Litchfield. They will head to Fairview Farm Golf Course tomorrow in Harwinton for the Berkshire League All-Star Tournament where multiple members of our Spartan golf team are in contention for league all-star positions. Our cross-country team likewise has had a successful season. They're seven and one. The girls team is seven and one. And the boys team is four and four, but they've shown significant improvement from last year. Both teams will compete in the Berkshire League Championships on Thursday at Black Rock State Park in Watertown. And the girls soccer team, which has a young team this year, has shown a lot of growth and promise as they kind of move to this rebuilding phase, trying to grow some new players to help fill the slots that some of those graduating players created. And our homecoming game in front of a large crowd, they probably played their best game against their rival Nanawog. They lost 3-0, but from what I saw, they were again playing position play much better, moving the ball around really well and played with a lot more confidence. So just a huge change from the team that maybe came out in that season. And last but certainly not least, the Northwest United Co-op Football Team has been red hot this season, picking up where they left off in their undefeated season last year. They have a perfect record of 5-0 and they sit atop the Connecticut Technical Conference. And they have a big game against Prince Tech this Thursday at Nanawog High School's homecoming. So if you want to go out and support the team, there's no better night than this Thursday. Again, they're playing really great football. They've had some pretty come from behind wins and it's a lot of fun. They give you some heart attacks sometimes at the time, but it's a lot of fun to go out and cheer them on. I also just want to share that we continue to, to work toward expanding our dual credit and dual enrollment. We've talked about this a few times and I had an opportunity to meet with folks from the State Department of Education recently, as well as other districts across the state, to learn from one another and talk about ways to help enable students to gain, gain college credits while in high school. And there's been a lot of inspirational examples that have been shared where students are getting internships with employers like Electric Boat or Sikorsky. And they're going on to high-paying jobs right out of high school. Employers are then offering to pay for these students to go back to school. So if they go and they work maybe as a welder at Sikorsky, but they really want to get into business, they'll pay for them to go back to business school or get an GPA. Other stories have said that they had students who wanted to work in regulation or compliance and they paid them to go to law school. So you know, these are real pathways that are making a difference for kids. And so it's something that we'd like to continue to learn more about. We have a $10,000 grant that helps support this work in regions as well. And I'm excited to continue working with our team at Chappag as well as the College and Career Accelerator Programs at Advance, as well as university departments and regional employers. So this is, I think, a real opportunity to bring significant change both to the region and to the state. So I'm very excited about that. In addition to that, I just want to go through the other portions of my report, which is an update on personnel. We have some appointments to share. Megan Trishy has been hired as long-term educational assistant sub at Washington Primary School. Brianna Killian has been hired as a long-term art substitute teacher for all of our elementary schools. And we also would like to share the leave of absence of art teacher at our elementary school was Jane B. M. With that, that concludes our quote.
Thank you very much. Questions? All right, we'll move.
I'm ready. Okay. May I proceed?
Yes, treasure report, please.
Thank you. I really don't have much to report. It's still early in the school year. We've not had an F and O meeting since our last meeting. The numbers look good. There's nothing out of the ordinary with the exception of propane, which we discussed last time. And Nicole is locked in the best price she can find anywhere. And I think we're in good shape as far as the trend report.
Very good. Okay, questions? If not, we'll move on to the committee reports at Advance. Joe? Justin? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed Justin. We'll, we'll come back. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, I attended the in-person October 5th Board of Directors meeting, which I was joined by our superintendent, Mark. During this meeting, as Mark had already touched upon, we were brought up to speed with the College and Career Accelerator Program. This program starts in the 2024-2025 school year. And it includes pathways for manufacturing and engineering, education, healthcare, and public safety. Those classes will be held at the new, at Advanced Regional Learning Center, which is in Torrington. And we also approved the agency's final budget for the 2023-2024 year. And that is all I have.
Okay, great. Now, Justin, curriculum and educational program.
So we just had a meeting earlier tonight and Leslie Hoesbrubbe was gracious enough to speak to us. She's the Spanish teacher for the elementary school. So she kind of gave us an overview as to how the program's going, what she, you know, what she's doing with each grade level. And basically we're showing us the logistics of how it works in the elementary school. She mentioned some of the goals focusing on listening comprehension, reading comprehension, speaking, and then eventually getting towards writing and telling, having kids write their own stories. And it sounds like the kids are very, very excited. So we look forward to that working out well. We also got an update on the reading program, the pilot programs, how that's going. Unit one for My View is almost complete. We're, we're towards the end of that and unit two will continue and then we'll kind of reevaluate from there.
Very good. Finance and operations, Alex.
Yeah, we have not had a meeting since our October 2nd meeting, which was just before the board meeting. So there's nothing new, but I'll just reiterate what we talked about there. We talked about heavy, about storm-related issues, lightning and the heavy rain. We talked about the septic system here at Chappag. And the final thing is we discussed briefly the three elementary schools and the fact that they need serious work. So that's reiterating what I said last time, but nothing really new this time.
Okay, thank you. Policy Committee, we haven't met since the last board meeting. We met right before that board meeting. So our next meeting is November 13th. Strategic and long-range plan.
We don't meet until November 6th.
Okay, there's nothing under old business, so we'll move on to action items. I kind of thought we got to these for a second reading last time, but apparently not. Oh, that was first. Okay, well, is there a motion to approve for a second reading proposed policy 4218.11 on non-discrimination and a motion to adopt the revisions contained there? Move. Is there a second? Move and secondly, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All those abstaining, please indicate. All right, it's unanimous. Is there a motion to approve for a second reading and adopt proposed policy revisions, the policy 4218 dot, dot 113 prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workforce? Move. Is there a second? Move and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. All those abstaining, please indicate that you abstained. That is unanimous by the 12-0. So those two policy changes are adopted. So we'll move on to new business. And the first item for is presentation of the class of 2023. Miss Bellows?
So the first section, I broke down the post-secondary plans in the class of 2023. We had 68 students in the class of 2023.
I, I'm sorry, could I interrupt for a second? Can we make this louder in some way? Is there a microphone that actually amplifies voice? Oh, there's going to be a delay. Well.
Get your megaphone.
Can you shout, please?
Okay, so there were a total of 68 students in this class. Forty-eight were accepted to post-secondary institutions. This includes students that were accepted to two-year programs and four-year programs. Forty-four students decided to attend those four-year programs. Then we had seven students who planned to attend a two-year institution or a technical or vocational training institution. These included the Connecticut State Community College System, Lincoln Tech, and Elite Lineman Training Institute. Three of the students who enrolled in two-year programs did so with the intention of transferring those credits to four-year programs. Then we had two students who decided to enter the workforce upon graduation. One student decided to take a gap year. Two students pursuing the military, one ROTC and one in the Marines. And then we had two students entering transition programs. These students met their academic requirements to graduate. They needed to continue to develop their vocational independent living skills. The next section indicates the majors and career areas of the class of 2023. I've listed the majors that are students are, that students entering post-secondary programs are planning to pursue. And then the majors that are selected by two or more students are noted with an asterisk in the list. These majors represent a variety of concentration areas and reinforce that diversity of the program we offer is essential for student engagement and self-discovery. This past school year, we also implemented a scheduling process that prioritizes student choice. And we plan to introduce new offerings annually with the goal to increase dual enrollment participation. Dual enrollment coursework will allow students to earn college credits while they explore an area of interest. Below the list of majors, you will see all of the college acceptances the class of 2023 received. These colleges represent 24 states and two countries. And below that list, you can see where the class of 2023 actually enrolled. The school counseling department meets with students for individual planning and will continue to host college representatives for information sessions in our College and Career Center throughout the fall. This fall, we have already welcomed 22 college admission representatives to our College and Career Center and have many more representative scheduled to meet with our students through November. Below the list of the schools where our students enrolled, you will see a list of academic accomplishments. We had one member of the class of 2023 who was awarded a National Merit Scholarship. Seventeen students were part of our National Honor Society. And then we also had a number of AP Scholars from the class of 2023. This includes five AP Scholars who scored a three or higher on three or more exams. Four students who earned AP Scholars with distinction, which means they averaged a score of 3.25 on all exams taken and earned a score of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And then we also had two AP Scholars with honors who averaged a score of 3.5 on all exams and earned a score of three or higher on five or more exams. I also want to note the accelerated coursework that our students pursued in the class of 2023. We had 51% take at least one AP course in their high school career. Forty percent took at least two AP courses. Fifty-six percent of the senior class enrolled in at least one dual enrollment course. Sixty-three percent took at least one honors course. And 29% of the class of 2023 took five or more honors courses. In addition to their academics, our students met and exceeded their 30 hours of community service graduation requirement. Out of the 68 students in the class of 2023, they accumulated 2,972 hours of service. And over 75% of the class exceeded the requirement for community service hours. And over seventy-five percent of the class exceeded the requirement for community service hours. Our community service award recipient accrued over two hundred hours of service. For scholarships, the class of twenty twenty-three was awarded over a hundred thousand dollars in scholarship money. And you can see at its next section, we have the individual scholarships listed as well as the students who were awarded the scholarships. And this information, along with all the data reflected in this report, will also be published in the class of twenty twenty-three graduate report. Does anybody have any questions about any of this data before I move on to the school profile?
I'd just like to make an observation. When you stop storing furniture in planetarium and you actually digitize it and increase the coursework area of responding to astrophysics, you end up with a with people going major in astrophysics. You see, this is, this is one exam. Now, I don't know, I can't remember that planetarium has been there long enough to totally influence this person in that direction. But it shows you that we have, we have kids that want to pursue those areas. And if it results, if we do something and results in opportunities for students, I think we're doing our job. And I think this is, this is really hopeful. I'm really excited to see that. Even if the planetarium didn't quite get this one over the line, it might get a few more or so.
Definitely. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I'm going to move on to the class of twenty twenty-three report. So that's a two-page document with the navy blue heading on top. So the school profile serves as a way to convey a picture of our school community, our student accomplishments, and the academic experience here at Chapag. It gives context to where students come from when they are applying to post-secondary institutions. At the top of the document, you will see a description of the Chapag School Community and Student Body. Each year, we update this section with the details of our enrollment, which includes a breakdown of our high school population and as well as the enrollment of the Agri Science Academy. Below this description, the Chapag Valley core values are noted. There are also details about the facilities on campus and more detailed information about the Agri Science Academy. At the bottom center of the page, we provide details of academic commitment recommendations. Students have the ability to earn points at each course, demonstrating their commitment to learning, and these points are noted on their official transcript. So this section explains what those academic commitment points can be earned for. At the bottom right of the document, you're going to see an explanation of our grade scale and GPA weighting process by course type is outlined. So flipping to the second page of the profile, there's more information on academic expectations at Chapag, as well as descriptions of our community service and senior project requirements. New this year, we've also added a description of the supervised agricultural experience required for all students in the Agri Science Academy program. Below that section in the center of the page, there is a box with a breakdown of the percentage of our students continuing their education, which I mentioned in the twenty twenty-three report. And also those students were accepted into post-secondary programs. Below that, we have noted the total number of community service hours previously mentioned that will also be highlighted in the class of twenty twenty-three report. And then we also have the test averages for the class of twenty twenty-three Connecticut SAT School Day. This was the digital test that these students took in spring of twenty twenty during their junior year. Along the bright side of the page, you will see an updated list of our accelerated coursework, all of our advanced placement dual enrollment college courses and honors. Courses for core academic areas are listed. And then we also have at the bottom right corner of the page of this document uh links to the syllabi of each course that are on our website, as well as a link to the comprehensive program of studies that outlines all the courses offered at S V S and their course descriptions. We also have information on the seal of bi-literacy. Students earn the seal of bi-literacy on their diploma by taking advanced language studies and sitting for a proficiency exam. Four students in the class of twenty twenty-three demonstrated their proficiency in two or more languages and earned the seal of bi-literacy. And the last section of the profile at the bottom of page two highlights some of the activities and accomplishments that occurred last school year here at Chapag, including the Harvard Model United Nations Conference, Halo nominations and awards, and lastly, numerous visual art events and awards that occurred throughout last school year. Are there any questions about the school profile?
Wanted to go back to the SATs scores. That was, they were taken in twenty twenty-two, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The class of um twenty twenty-three took them in the spring of twenty twenty-two during their junior year, which is the Connecticut main mandated exam.
I'm gonna have a follow-up with Teresa about that later, so.
Any other questions?
Um, going back to that box with the graduates and the percentage rates of acceptance from the SAT score. Are you able to track or are you seeing any trends over the last few years? I know every year we march a little bit closer towards normalcy. And a lot of these students that graduated in twenty twenty, all of them were impacted at some point significantly in their high school career. But do we have any reliable tracking on, you know, how that's been impacted on test scores or acceptance rates or their postgraduate plans? Are we seeing trends of kids going towards their four-year programs or going directly into the workforce or gap years? I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure what that trend looks like.
So as far as the test scores, those have definitely gone down over the past few years because they're not as impactful in the admissions process. You have over two thousand institutions nationwide who either don't have, don't require test scores, or it's test optional. So there's not the same reliance on that score for college admissions. Um, are all our students still taking the test then? They're required to by the state of Connecticut, so every single student is required to take it, but they're not repeating it like they used to. So in years past, students would take it multiple times to increase that score. Now, because it's not required at most of their schools that they're applying to, they're not even retaking it. They're mostly relying on their transcript, which is a better indicator of their success in college.
I was up with my next question. It's just, I'm, I've got really little kids, so I'm far away from the process. I'm not familiar with it at this stage.
Sure.
What are those post-secondary schools looking for now? Besides the transcript, what does that application process look like? And, you know, what, where is the stress for students? Are, I mean, is that even still a high importance? We've got a sixty-four percent acceptance rate to four-year programs. Does that track normally for our students? Is that high or low, or is that pretty average for us?
So it's been pretty consistent. I will say it dipped a little with last year's graduating class. Um, maybe that's because it was our first graduating class that we graduated our Agri Science Academy students as well. Um, so you have a more diverse population, right, with different interests and um different pathways thereafter. So I would say if we're looking at the last five years or so, so last year we were at sixty-eight percent four-year enrollment. Um, this year we're at sixty-four percent. Years prior, we were in the mid-seventies. So it's fluctuated a bit, but not tremendously. Um, and then we also have students who maybe they're not in that four-year category, but because we have the Connecticut PACT program that allows students to enroll in community college for free and transfer all of their credits thereafter to a four-year institution, um, which is a huge financial savings. We have more students pursuing that pathway to get to the four-year degree.
May I ask one more question? Just because it's come into, um, feel like my inbox recently, there must have been a couple of articles about recently about the disconnection they they're seeing across the state of high school students, kind of a disengagement and disconnection, probably as a result from COVID and the pandemic of either not having plans or not being sure where to go, workforce issues being at risk, family issues. Are we seeing any of that impact at our school? Do you feel like there is a higher level of those kids that are maybe at risk or in that, that kind of process?
So I definitely see a higher number of students directly entering the workforce. Um, and not because they don't necessarily want to pursue post-secondary education, but because they're worried about finding finances. And so some of those programs can be very costly. Um, and they're not going to get robust scholarships as they would at some of those four-year institutions. So they're going directly to work in the interim. Um, but not necessarily closing the door on continued education. They just aren't prepared to do it right out of school.
Do we have any way to follow up with an alumni who would want to eventually make a plan to go into college, like is there counseling services for that? You know, if, if we know a student is going to go into the workforce to kind of take time, do we reconnect with them? Is that a thing that we do?
So it's my second year here, but this past year with the twenty twenty um three cohort, we did a mandated senior exit interview and we got personal contact information. Um, we also are implementing the alumni tracker so we could see where students actually end up enrolling and where they graduate from. Um, and we're going to be reviewing, viewing that data annually and following up with students who we think may need that extra support. Um, so maybe they didn't enroll in a program right upon graduation, but if they need that support, you know, a couple of years down the line, we're prepared to do that and we can track them and contact them.
I love that. That's wonderful.
Any other question?
Other question?
Yes, hi. Um, I have, I'm looking at the scholarships, the list of scholarships that you have, and um I have a sophomore here at Chapag, but I also have an older child who went through a different school district. And in the other school district, they started um speaking to the students when they were freshmen, talking about the different opportunities that they had for scholarship and to, you know, reinforce what they possibly wanted to do. And of course, as a freshman, you don't really know. You're fourteen years old. You don't know what you want to do with your life, and it's a lot of pressure. But they started talking about how they could pay, help pay for college and the cost of college and certain things. And there's definitely students that want to go into the trades. And I think it's an admirable decision to make to go into the trades because we all need trade in this life. Um, but to discuss the opportunity to help pay for college at a younger age, um, helps the students to make decisions. So at what point do we here at Chapag start talking to the students and talking to them about the different ways that they could pay for college or the different paths? Do you start when they're freshmen or sophomores, or do you start later in, you know, in their junior year?
So for the scholarships specifically, many of them are specifically geared towards that drug in senior class. A lot of them are local organizations that are sponsoring scholarships for that senior class. However, we do make students aware of websites where they can create profiles. Um, and maybe they're not necessarily local scholarships, but scholarships that might fit their specific profile. Um, we also have started um to invite twice a year um the Barnum Group that presents a financial literacy um explanation of what students and parents could be doing right now to help prepare um for that looming cost of post-secondary. Um, and then the state of Connecticut is actually going to be mandating a financial literacy course for every student. Um, so that's going to be great. So we'll be able to embed that into our program and students will have a semester of financial literacy in addition to all of our school counseling.
In what year?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure what the year of implementation will be. Right now, we offer personal finance. Um, but not all students take that as their math requirement. Um, so this would be an elective, well, it wouldn't be an elective course, it would be a mandated course. Um, but it would be a course that they would take in addition to their math requirements.
Have there, I, I just, I'm sorry, one more question. Have there been um any potential collaborations with um local community college, let, let's say, Nogatuck Valley and doing like the early college opportunity that they start right as freshmen? Is, is that something that we do?
Yes, we do do that. Um, so Nogatuck Valley sponsors five seats a semester, uh, two Chapag students. Um, we have a lot of interest. And then unfortunately, because geographically and when the classes are offered, students are not necessarily able to make the commitment to be on campus. Um, so it doesn't always work out. So one of the goals of implementing more dual enrollment opportunities that we have in the coming years is that we can have more opportunities here on campus. So students can have those college credit opportunities here within their school day, um, rather than having to make a decision between extracurricular activities after school and getting to a college campus that might be thirty, forty minutes away.
Do you have a goal of how many um courses would be offered? Do you have a specific goal that you would like to be offered to the students?
So we have some specific pathways that we, um, that students have demonstrated interest in. Um, so a pre-medicine pathway, um, a business pathway and an engineering pathway are some areas that we definitely want to pursue. It really is going to depend on those, um, the partnerships we're able to develop at some of the local universities. Um, and at Advance is also a big partner network. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Who else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number three under new business and updates, October one enrollment data.
Okay, let's just share with the board an update on enrollment data. We capture this every year um on October the first. That's the um official kind of everybody stop and freeze when we count all the kids across the country. Um, and so this year, um, you can see the enrollment listed in the chart that um was included in the packet. Um, overall, for the district, we have seven hundred ninety-seven students. Five hundred and seventy of those are students that come from our three sending towns. We also picked up an additional two hundred and twenty-seven students um through tuition in. If you go school by school, um, Burnham School has seventy-two students, fifty-two who live in the town, twenty who are coming in as tuition students. Booth Free School has eighty-five students, seventy-eight from the town, seven coming into us um through tuition and programming. Washington Primary has a hundred and thirty-nine students, a hundred and twenty-eight coming from the town and eleven coming in from uh Tuition Inn. At Washington Primary, we should also note, um, as well as Booth Free, uh, pick up a couple of students from um some of our own schools within the district. So we have students from Bridgewater that um or Roxbury that choicens some of our other schools. So at Washington Primary, we have two students from Roxbury that um leave Roxbury and go over to Washington. And Booth Free has five students um that come over from Bridgewater. Yes. So if you look at Booth, for example, Alex, you'll see there's a column that says Bridgewater. If you trace that down, you'll see there's five total students from Bridgewater that come to Booth. Do you see that? Yep. Chapag is broken into a um into two divisions, the middle school and the high school divisions. In the middle school, we have a hundred and forty-six students, one hundred and twenty-seven coming to us from the towns, nineteen coming in through um either uh tuition in or um our children of staff numbers. Um, Washington Primary, I thought I also mentioned has some staff, uh, children as well, if you don't want to go. And then um if you look at the, the high school, it gets a little bit, um, there's a lot more moving parts there because we pick up students through um Agri Science and Tuition Inn, Sherman, um, and some of our staff children, but we have a hundred and eighty-five students who um would be from the three sending towns. Who um would be from the three sending towns, were not involved in any of those aforementioned groups. But then we pick up two students who um have parents who teach at the school. We have forty students that come to us through our agreement with Sherman. Um, we pick up nineteen other students who um pay tuition to come in. Um, and then we have a hundred and nine students um that join our Agri Science program from other towns. Uh, who are not our own students. We have forty-three students from the district that just been Agri Science. Uh, actually it's forty-two students that just been Agri Science with eight coming from Bridgewater, uh eight coming from Washington and sixteen coming from Roxbury. And so overall, um current enrollment as of um. The first day of October was seven hundred ninety-seven total students in the district. Again, five seventy from the sending towns, two hundred and twenty-seven through all of other programs combined. Any questions?
When you said five several sending, you mean five from the three towns?
Yeah, you said, yeah, right. Sorry, five from the three towns that were normally sent students to our schools, right? So that that thank you. Yeah, so five from our our three towns that make up the the district and then um. The other sending towns. Sorry, that was a.
That's all right.
Confusing phrase.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go on to item four, curricular updates. Dr. DeBrito.
Good evening, everyone. I guess. So the graphic you see is very representative of the district's part of the presentation. Definitely hit the ground running. And um happy to share the curricular update. So first we're going to start with agriculture and the capstone project now. Um, the supervisor of culture has been concerned as a capstone project for students and the average program. While they're a junior or a senior and it really does. Line nicely to the capstone experiences that we originally had for our students. So students will be researching data, analyzing information, providing documentation. Um, reflecting on their own professional and personal growth areas. And developing effective communication skills and certainly having a culminating presentation at the end of the experience. Next one to highlight astronomy, um key concepts. That are a part of that course. That's a new course, um really looking at ancient civilizations, major milestones in the history of astronomy. Looking at analyzing and interpreting historical data and observations. Um, also looking at the use of technology such as SLU to provide evidence of astronomical theories and laws. And engaging critical thinking and problem solving. So a little synopsis there for astronomy. Another course that we are piloting actually is um honors physics. And we've embedded um some enrichment um specific activities into that particular course. Including the motion of Earth's crust, how we relate slope to the graph of motion. And the study of plate tectonics, space science, collecting data on orbital periods. Um, and the study of motion really looking at velocity um and from tangent lines in particular. Another new course um at the elementary level is Spanish. And you heard earlier that Mrs. Holzgrube did visit. The curriculum and um education programming committee to give a little overview. Um, but the first six weeks that have been developed are really focused on students understanding how to say their name in Spanish, developing routines. How to develop um vocabulary in Spanish. Very exciting to be at the elementary school. I I do hear announcements in Spanish. There is attempts for the students to um. Talk in Spanish for the whole uh school. Sports medicine. This is new for the high school. And we start off that particular course exploring different careers. Looking at the impact of sports medicine professionals on athletic performance and well-being. In addition, I've highlighted specific units, um training and conditioning. Uh, the principles of effective sports training and conditioning. And how athletes perform and develop based on their training and conditioning um regiment. And certainly students are able to design and implement safe and effective training programs based on what they learn in the course. Sports nutrition. The study of nutrients and how they play a key role in our performance. And anyone in sports obviously is looking for optimal performance. So it's very important to consider all the conditions out there, any dietary supplements. Um, and helping students to analyze the information that's out there because it is critical for athletes. To make informed decisions that they are taking supplements. Also studying any dangers um and impact on athletic performance uh based on decisions. Of substance use, tobacco, alcohol, um drug use, et cetera. And the students do create an individualized sports nutrition plan for athletes depending on the research that they do. Um, so that they can get some experience on creating a training program. Sports injuries is another unit. Um, this is pretty fascinating to study how physics impacts the body. And all the physical mechanical aspects of our body and how if we don't stretch. And have proper nutrition, we really can injure ourselves. And so students are able to take a deep dive into injuries and gather information um regarding injuries. Sports psychology is another unit. Specifically about mindset and self-confidence and how you manage stress. If you follow sports, not saying that anybody's watching football these days, but if you are. You can see certain players, how they handle themselves under pressure. And others might crack and not be able to pull it home, if you will. So managing stress, being able to um have this mindset of reflective practice. Looking at any particular setbacks, how to recover from setbacks. And certainly looking at mental toughness, resilience, positive self-talk. Um, but the balance of athletic demands and personal well-being is also studied in the course. Moving along, um rehabilitation, so the study of how our body heals. How our tissues heal, the muscle skeletal system, the multi-step processes that are involved when there is an injury. And how to restore function and prevent re-injury. That's very critical um for the well-being of an athlete. And there are therapeutic modalities. Um, and certainly the students will be studying how exercise and restoring strength, flexibility and range of motion. Are affected depending on the protocols that are put in place. And so functioning training and sports specific exercises are essential in order to keep the athlete safe. And ensure they can return to play um if they did suffer an injury. Video game design and programming is new. Students will explore computer programming through the lens of scratch. And um for this particular course, the key programming concepts are critical. And students do also develop an understanding of the history of video games. Um, the platforms that exist and certainly look at psychology. What are motivations, rewards, challenges, why it can be addicting? Video game design is another unit where they do study mechanics, design thinking, the iterative design process. I mean, there's a lot of research that goes into developing games. Um, and the consumer is the one that really does field all that information for developers. And the video game programming unit incorporates problem solving, computational thinking, algorithms, variables, control structures. So depending on the type of game determines the steps that are taken in the sequence of algorithms that the designer creates. CAD three D modeling and animation has been updated. Um. We do have additional digital skills, um animation and Google applications. And students being able to code with JavaScript um has been added. Digital Design Lab is middle school, it's eighth grade. There have been enhancements there as well, in particular. Um, news writing and graphics and the human condition and how we do present information that is relevant. Um, in regard to mental health, personal growth and well-being. Personal exploration is eighth grade um course and very research-based. It's almost like a mini capstone, similar to what seniors might experience, the senior project, but at a smaller scale to help middle schoolers develop. Those capacities. So students do engage in a comprehensive process of exploration, really looking at self-interest. And developing their communication and research abilities. And students are also um going to be using Adobe Express software for multimedia portfolios. Uh, there is excitement already in the course and I'm just sharing some of the current projects. That students um have self-selected, would love to bring them here. Um, for you to also experience some of that excitement. Project Lead the Way in the middle school, cybersecurity has been added to all of the grades, in particular. Social media threats, um introduction to social engineering, phishing, safeguarding personal information and password security. Cyberbullying, different types of threats. Social engineered, um it's also continued for the upper grades. And we also are discussing online shopping and public wifi and personal information and artificial intelligence. And fake news and our roles as creators and consumers of what's on the internet. So a lot happening there at the middle level. The TV studio, so as you know, um the TV studio has been updated. We finally have the Tricaster that arrived. That purchase was supported by a grant. Um, and so we're excited to have the students experience um that and they'll also use Adobe. Photoshop and After Effects to create virtual sets. And we're updating uh the technology, we're getting new cameras. And we're going to have the current cameras um go to the eighth grade digital design lab and the exploratory personal interest project classes. Additional courses that are being updated this year, just gave um a brief list here. We've got food science. Um, our new hire, Megan Davenport, recently went to observe a teacher or colleague over in region fourteen who teaches food science. And so we're needing to further develop the food science curriculum here. Ad Mechanics, we have a new hire, Ed is also updating um that curriculum. And then CAD three D modeling and animation is also going to include After Effects industry standard software. And so we're going to update that. Ag Ecline is happening um this year as well. And science courses are being updated specifically. In addition to what I've already described, that's been done, biology, chemistry and physics are all being updated. Future updates um based on legislative requirements, you heard earlier. Financial literacy is a graduation requirement. It's for this class of freshmen. So before they graduate, they will need to have a minimum of a half a credit of financial literacy. So that course is being revamped. We do have personal finance, but I'll be excited to share um that curriculum because it's going to be pretty exciting. Comprehensive literacy at the elementary level will also be updated. We're also um adding play embedded instruction for elementary school, another legislative um requirement for a year from now. And also some professional development linking um strategic plan and school-based initiatives. Instruction and professional learning, wanted to highlight things that are happening right now. Um, the Institute for Learning from University of Pittsburgh, we are continuing that particular partnership with IFL. It is year three. Specifically focused on increasing student achievement. Um, these three years, the math and English, uh language arts teachers have been a part of the modeling and coaching that has existed. Uh, K twelve for English in particular and secondary math. This year, um, we've adjusted to lesson labs. Where we have consultants come in and work with the teachers and provide feedback on lessons that are developed. And then a team of colleagues of teachers at the school also engage and visits those classrooms. And they're the building administrators. So we're continuing that. Reading instruction, a lot of professional learning here for the younger grades. Um, we are piloting, as you've heard, and teachers are really wrapping their heads and minds around the science of reading. So it's exciting to see um what our kids are able to do. So. Looking forward to that presentation for the whole board as well. The current um. Company that we have been partnering with, through my view, they've been very supportive. Um, that consultant has already attended eighteen sessions to support the teachers um as they carry this forward. Teacher evaluation, um the PDAC committee has met because we are adjusting teacher evaluation. As the guidelines have changed, so we wanted to be more flexible and allow a lot more professionalism, just you know professionalism and. Self-professional growth initiatives for teachers rather than having it be such an algorithmic. Aspect where they actually were put in buckets of whether they were proficient or exemplary. Or, you know, still developing. So those categories are going away. So you'll be hearing much more about that, but we're developing that for next year as well. Additional professional opportunities, there have been a lot of requests. I just, I'm just bringing the pile so far this year. So our teachers are definitely committed to attending professional learning and I wanted to highlight here. Um, aspects of professional learning that are currently or have already happened just this school year. And the list will continue to grow and grow as it does each year. Happy to answer any questions on. These updates. Please.
Questions?
Great. Can we go back to astronomy for a second?
Absolutely.
You mentioned SLU and that's a program that we've purchased over the last few years that has been really sounding like. It can be really exciting and very um like a great kind of developmental tool. To help out with astronomy and how are we using that? We feel like we're using it to its potential. Are there pitfalls to it? Are there ways that we could utilize it better? Um, we've had a few board presentations from Mike Haley Chief over the last two years. So just kind of want to follow up with how that's being integrated.
Sure. And I can also say that the elementary fifth grade students have also benefited because they came last year. To visit and have a session with Ben. Um, and we're planning that again this year, but specifically for astronomy here at the high school, I think those are very important reflective questions. That I'll be soliciting from the teacher and the student, but that, you know, obviously you'll be on the same page to come back to you. Let you know how it's going.
Fifth grade isn't using it in the classroom yet, right?
Right.
This is like, it's the program where they can, they have individual access that doesn't, isn't necessarily dependent on the um.
They were given a list, a very specific um session, lessons that they could utilize and they were mapping how that fits in to fifth grade. Um, and found that actually coming here in person was pretty exciting um for the students and wanted to continue that. Um, but are you wanting more details?
Yeah.
For elementary?
Are we folding that into the curriculum or are teachers just using that as like an ancillary material?
It is ancillary at the elementary level currently.
Okay.
They do use Project Lead the Way and Mystery Science. For those science standards at the elementary level.
Um, do we have an idea of how many students are utilizing it or how many of the teachers have gone through the training to be able to implement that?
Well, at least four. At least four. Well, at least four, at least four, just a couple of weeks ago, went through the training and it was held here.
For staff members or?
Yes, at least four went through the training for the planetarium use, right? So that's, and as far as enrollment in the course, might you happen to know that?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. NGSS are the National Science Standards now. And of course, as science has always been a way of thinking, more than just a list of facts. So that instruction now proceeds that you present kids with a phenomenon and then ask them to try to explain it and hypothesize about it and then test their hypothesis with the scientific method. And when SLU first came along, our science team was excited about using it and they were using it as a tool to look at the skies. They weren't sure at first that it would present that kind of opportunity where kids could encounter an astronomical phenomenon, hypothesize about it and then test it. But when that fellow came in, Mike, and talked to our science IELTS, he said, we are now revamping the tools and the connections in SLU so that it will help kids do that. So I expect that when the course runs in the second semester, we'll see SLU being one of the tools that help kids do that kind of thing, practice the scientific method. But we're not, we don't have robust answers yet because the class hasn't started yet. We do appreciate the investment in SLU, we do appreciate the fact that it's going to help us get kids excited about astronomy. And we appreciate that it's going to have a more robust connection to NGSS type thinking. I think it's going to be very good. We have 15 students enrolled in the class for the second semester.
Can I ask you a question about, follow up question on our astronomy program? You're going to have very long in 2025. You're going to see NASA sending back to the moon. And I presume that we're going to make plans going to bring that into the curriculum. If that doesn't excite anyone, you're going to work on it.
I wouldn't normally speak for our teachers without talking to them first, but yes, the answer to that is a clear yes. And whatever happens with Mars too. And I think in all our courses, whether it's science, history, math, we want to make connections to things that are going on now in the real world to make the learning relevant. So that's a resounding yes. Happy to update you on that.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Can I move on to Spanish for a second? I just, because I thought I heard you say it and I was taking a note, so we're doing announcements in Spanish? I was at Booth Free and the students were speaking in Spanish, introducing themselves, the dates. So like, yeah, starting to actually come across the announcement for the whole school. I'm wondering, outside of Spanish as part of the curriculum, we talked a little bit in the committee meeting about how we are seeing our Spanish-speaking population grow, particularly in the elementary schools. Is there, I mean, that just struck me as also a really great way to involve those students as well. You know, outside of curriculum, are we doing more of kind of interpreting or translating or, you know, finding ways to include those students? I've got more questions about that, I think closer to testing and, you know, kind of what we're doing with that student population.
So what I can tell you is we have eight at the elementary level. And anytime we have students arrive, they are fully immersed into our program. And we do have Spanish-speaking teachers reach out to the families to make sure they come to open house, to make sure they come to parent conferences. They are well, well-supported. And I have to say that our track record is they do exit the multilingual program through state testing because they really do acclimate very, very well. It's not the highest, we've had higher, we've had up to 14.
You mean across the district, like in, what do you mean?
As far as the number of students.
Oh.
So there have been other years where we've had more than current numbers. But the students are very, very successful when they enter here, especially at the younger ages.
Since we're on it, do they take state testing in Spanish?
Yeah, no, I can answer that too. So they have a test that's called Last Links that's very specific to their acquisition of English language. So there's a listening component, there's a speaking component, there's a reading comprehension component, there's a writing component. That's mandated for all students in the multilingual program. In addition to that, they are required to take the Smarter Balance, the NGSS, the SAT if they happen to enter at the secondary level in English.
So they're taking that back in English?
Taken in English, however, there are translations and readability in Spanish. So we accommodate, so it's not like the entire thing shows up that way, but we utilize all of the platforms that the state allows. And if they need a human individual who speaks Spanish, we provide that as well. So we do that. And then even our internal assessments, like the STAR, we do, we can administer that in Spanish as well.
I don't know if you're prepared to talk about this later, but is there a way we can kind of circle back with what this, what that program entails or how, how we are servicing those students and?
Oh, yes, the multilingual learners. Oh, absolutely. So most of it is push-in into the classroom and there is some pull-out. So the teacher who does teach the students to acquire the English language in addition to the classroom teacher is sitting right next to the students, translating for the students. And the classroom teacher fully immerses the students in the learning. So I've gone out and gotten materials, for example, that are in Spanish and the identical text is also in English. So the teacher understands what the student is learning about and can acclimate the student into the bigger learning of the classroom. So happy to give those details, but that's really, it's like an all hands on approach to help the students be successful.
Is that like a one staff member per building or is that?
So we have Mrs. Branca at the elementary level and she does assist and serve in all three elementary schools because we do have multilingual learners this year in all three elementary schools. We have here Ms. Blitzer, who supports multilingual learners and does also connect with the teachers. Because here at the secondary level, the students have many more teachers, it's more challenging. The content is more challenging, so it always depends on how much instruction in their native language aligned with the content that they're learning while they're here. So that, it varies by age and by grade.
Good questions. Thank you very much. You're up next.
I am up next.
Ask for it.
That, yeah, that is coming around as well. So this first page, we're looking at the Connecticut Smarter Balance and Next Generation Science Assessment. Those assessments are aligned to state standards. And the test questions, teachers in Connecticut contributed to the development of those specific test questions. The math and the ELA are adaptive assessments based on how students respond to determine the next series of questions. And in math, they do have a performance task as well, which is a multi-layered problem. Science is administered in grades five, eight and 11, whereas math and ELA is racially through eight. And so the chart that you see is the results of all these assessments. These are the results for students across our district. So I have it here by school and by grade. So you can see in third grade, the results for English Language Arts and Math. There is no science in third grade, that's why you do not see it as you go across the schools. And then directly underneath, you have the fourth grade results by school and subject.
Can I ask a question, Teresa?
Sure.
This says, these, these numbers are for the percentage of students who met the benchmark. What does that, what is?
So the state has identified levels three and four, so they're green and blue. So blue being beyond proficient, high performing, and then green being the mastery level, minimum level of acceptance for proficiency. So these percentages are students that meet those benchmarks data points.
How do we know which?
So grade three, 79% of the students in grade three at Booth Free met the benchmark for English Language Arts.
So the benchmark is either above proficiency or mastery, is that clear?
Correct. Those two categories, the green and the blue.
What about, are, are, are any of these numbers for people who are met proficiency but not gone further?
No, this is encompassing everybody. As long as they match the benchmark, it does not.
I'm not understanding what you mean by benchmark. I mean, you thought benchmark was above proficiency and mastery. Now you're telling me, no, it's also proficiency.
So the state does refer to it as proficiency and above proficiency. I know Mark, I think you were about to grab the microphone.
So it's a really complicated question. So how to determine the benchmark, which was proficiency, right? So students can be below proficient, approaching proficient, proficient or above, right? So there's four kind of buckets that we put kids in. And that number changes year over year. So what they do is they take all the test takers in each grade level across the state and then they'd set cut scores. And so they get together every year. And this is an issue where people come together and they kind of hash out, okay, where should those dividing lines be? So it really changes year to year based on how the test takers performed, where they set those thresholds. So we get the number for what it was for this year for each grade level. But again, it's a moving kind of number year to year based on where the test scores are. Whatever the, the cut score was last year for grade three proficiency won't be the same for the following year and it's not the same for the two years previous.
Just because, I mean, I know I've been on the board for just a little while, but typically when you say we have a number to compare it to, right? So whatever that number is, it helps us to get a gauge of where we actually are. So I understand that it's difficult from year to year, but we've always had a number that's a benchmark. So it's helpful for us to understand where exactly we are when we're looking at these numbers. And so when I look at these numbers, it, it doesn't help me to really get where we are. So I don't know how clear this is to me. Am I the only one?
So there are, I think when Mark says there are raw scores, right? There are raw scores, a thousand something.
But haven't you always used numbers in the pow?
It's always been these percentages.
But don't, don't you have a benchmark for what these percentages are comparison to other? So for example, how do we know what that number means if we don't have a benchmark number?
This just means that 79% of the third graders
Yeah.
met the criteria proficiency for the state assessment. 79%
Yeah, I understand.
Of all the kids, right? So that, that's what that is referring to. It's the percentage of students that met the criteria that the state determined. We've always given you percentages. We don't, the state tells us where proficiency is and we are looking at.
It's a raw score.
Right, it's a raw score. So we look at the percentage of students, the percentage of students that we have in class. How many of those students and who are those students who met that level? And who are the students who did not meet that level? So that's what this is saying. So 21% did not meet the level for that population of just third grade at Booth Free School. If I look at fourth grade, 90% of all the fourth graders at Booth Free School met the required level by the state. So 10% did not, and we're able to determine who those 10% are. It could be one child depending on the number of kids. And so you have it here across all schools.
Definitely. I think maybe what Jen is referring to is that in years past, we've seen, because we know as a cohort, that can change from year to year. So like the fifth grade class that we're looking at, for example, at Booth Free has a 67% of meeting proficiency in ELA, right? We don't have a trend here to say how that class performed in fourth grade and then for at grade. So we're not seeing what, like the other half of proficiency is, is our growth. So did this class grow? Did this class shrink? It looks like compared to fourth grade, they're significantly less proficient. There's not a context for how many, like you said, the kids in the class, there could be one that's skewing the number very high or very low. So that is a comparison, I think would be really helpful to understand.
We can get you that, we actually have these navigated reports from Linkit that do a really great job of showing exactly what you're looking at, how cohorts have performed over, over time. You can see, you know, how they've gone through that staircase.
Yeah, because it would look like.
So we can send those out.
Classes are underperforming their, you know, lower grade counterparts. And how is that going to translate into sixth grade? Was it a blip year or was it, you know, are they trending well or not well? Overall, I would say our math scores look pretty alarming. I don't know what that trend is over the years. And I see like later on, we're, we're going to talk about where we are in comparison to other dergs or our derg and other similar maybe district. But I'd be interested in knowing, getting your take on why that trend is, what that looks like. I know we've spent a decent amount of money recently on your REVA two and IFL and are those grouping substantial, you know? Some of, some of these scores look alarming.
Right. We're in agreement there, definitely in agreement, knowing that there's a lot of work still to be done. But you're right, we are putting a lot of resources into student achievement and Linkit, which is the new data warehouse that Mark introduced us to. In addition to the first district data team, really diving into student results and what does it mean? Because we're doing a lot, but if we're really just drowning in data and not fully making changes that have impact, of course, we want to know that. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done here.
Are your teachers finding that these scores are reflective of what's happening in the classroom? Are we finding, you know, sixth, seventh and eighth grade math classes? Are they going, yeah, our test scores look like, you know, the, the trend is they've been declining. Also, I'm seeing that in the classroom. I'm just wondering what that, the test score piece is, is that reflective of how our staff is feeling, like our kids are understanding or mastering that material?
I would say this does not reflect the best of our students. And also realizing what has happened post-COVID. To be perfectly frank, there's been trepidation. Students don't necessarily respond well to pressures. And so balancing that, because high expectations is not a four-letter word. So coming out of the, we had momentum before COVID, tremendous positive momentum. And it just totally knocked us on our. And it just totally knocked us on our backs. And so we're trying to recover from that, but like I said, there has been noticeable trepidation even from students to fully embrace learning and apply their learning and be, you know, perseverers of learning. So there is work that needs to be done there as well.
So the numbers, so and just help me understand, so there was how many years that we didn't do this during COVID?
Right. So last year's data would potentially be year one of a baseline post-COVID.
Where are those? For me, I would like to be able to see from group to group, from from pre-COVID to this. I'd like to see the last five years to really get a sense of what you're saying. Because for us, we haven't had this kind of presentation in a while, and it's out of context for me to be able to compare from year to year.
We can absolutely do that.
I kind of wish that that was here because it would help us to have a better sense of what we're really.
For sure.
I was going to save my comments to to the SAT, but it all this is tying in now, especially with the elementary math and middle school and high school math scores. And the SAT math scores, which are well below even the national average. And I asked this before Megan left, she said, I was concerned because our SATs, Megan told us that our SATs, especially math, dropped on an entire level. And so I did some research, tried to get some information from the State Department of Education in that. But I caught a math instructor coming out of the mall. They are coming out of a performance or something. Reason wasn't, that wasn't that important, but um, she told me it wasn't COVID at all. She didn't think. She thought it was the Engage. Are we still involved in the Engage New York curriculum?
It's Eureka Square, which has been updated. Engage New York is New York, but this is the publishing company, which is called Eureka. So we're now using the squared.
And it also confuses the parents as well, is what I was informed. I, you know, I'm not certain, but maybe we should take a look at the the program rather than the instructors.
Sure, absolutely. That the Eureka Square is new, this past year, and teachers reviewed it and requested it. That's why they're using the Eureka Square, because it's been existing for a year.
I mean, that's. So compared to last year, are you saying that, what would you say the improvements for not like are the up down? Like overall feeling, because.
The concerns continue.
So then what have we done over the last year that we should be either not doing, or what is the plan moving forward?
Right, because that's why Megan had brought IFL as a, these experts to impact math instruction. And so what's happened this year is their approach is different. It's hands-on in the classroom, working alongside the teachers with lesson development, while other teachers gather around our part of visiting committees. So that the struggle that needs to happen, the productive struggle and the accountable talk actually does want to fruition in the classroom for the student.
Good question. You've you've given us a selection of other districts in comparison. And you use those in the derg and then four contiguous districts. And the reason why we don't have a broader set of information?
We can, we can extend it beyond, no, no reason. We can extend it with even more districts if you like.
I mean, we aspire to have the best schools in the state. It'd be nice to see other districts and other dergs in here. Because, you know, I I recognize derg places limitations between socioeconomic formulation. But that doesn't mean we have to be bound by it. I I would prefer to see a report with more information than that.
So a combination of districts and dergs, A and B?
Well, I don't know. Maybe you need to give us the whole state. But the point is, I I I think we need to see more. Probably A and B is probably what it would say.
Because we're a derg speed.
That would probably be helpful.
I, yes, didn't you say in your other presentation that it's now required that everybody takes SAT?
It has been. It is a state law that every student has to take the SAT. And they are definitely not welcoming of that experience. Because like Sophia said to you earlier, colleges aren't necessarily requiring it. And that those those results don't go anywhere. They don't impact the student. They don't have to share them at all. So that's our reality. That is a definite reality to consider. I mean, we're not hearing from students that they weren't prepared when they left Todd. I just have to reiterate that aspect, because we do stay in touch with students when they graduate.
So if they know that the SATs don't really matter, why is there such a big push to have our kids have grand SAT scores when they don't really know, but it doesn't even matter?
During the mind of a teenager.
So, you know, pushing curriculum on numbers is not what I'm all about.
Stephanie? Two totally separate questions, but just that Mary brought it up, then Sophie, or I don't know if this is a you or a Mark question. But what then is the district's, I guess, for lack of a better word, position on SAT scores? Are we encouraging kids to take them? When they've taken once, are we encouraging them to take it again? Are we telling them it's up to them? I don't know if if this is like a self-motivation thing or if the district is driving, you know, the influence.
Well, I can tell you at the school level, it's not optional. Um, and there are sessions beyond regular classroom instruction to help prepare students. And they've even partnered with Horizon, which is another agency that has similar assessments like the SAT that come with instructional aspects for the teacher so that students can have that experience. We also have our students participate in the PSAT so that it can mirror a similar experience to the SAT. So all of those things are happening starting in ninth grade.
So the district is actively encouraging students to perform and or take again, if possible, improve scores. There, that's the push.
If they take it again, it's their dime. The state pays because they mandate it. They pay, and there's a get SAT day. And on that day, when the students are here taking it, um, they do not pay for that. But any test that they would like to take in addition to that is out of pocket cost.
And we we don't, as a district, subsidize that name. Like the student wants to take it for a second time. We don't help them.
Not any. No, we pay for the PSAT experiences here. No one has to pay for those. Not all of those experiences beginning in ninth grade, nobody has to pay for those.
Okay. Um, my second question is totally unrelated to SAT, back to SBACK. Um, as a technical question, just because I have it fresh in my mind, because I have my fifth graders SBACK letter from the state. When you're looking at the tier levels and you can get, you know, tier one through four, four is exceeding grade level. Three is meeting grade level. What, how how are they finding those top and bottom scores? Are those what the state is determining as top and bottom, or are those actually students who have performed at, you know, I think the top score could be like, you know, two thousand, five hundred, whatever.
When they reach that top score, that's the top score, and their bar will go all the way to the end, and there's nowhere else for that bar to go.
Cannot perform lower than the bottom number, and they cannot perform higher, you know, where if you're looking at the piece of paper, it's kind of tiered and colored, and above the highest level, it's kind of shaded gray. A student cannot possibly score higher than that or lower than.
Correct. There are these lines. Absolutely.
Okay, so that's like the the state has put that in place. That's, you can only perform within those four tiers.
There are psychometricians that a lot of research, they really gauge statistically what are the band for these raw scores. And that, that's how it's determined by grade. So yes, there's much work to be done, to be continued. Um, and we'll provide that level of additional detail and year-to-year review. Right?
I wish I had had these numbers earlier to look at, and I might have come up with some more eliminated questions. But it it appears like the high, the kind of the high school level and the SAT results, that of the towns in our derg, we're in the bottom quarter on ELA, and we're in the bottom third on math. So if that is the case, I'm looking where we are on ELA Math and Science at elementary. And there we're second in ELA, fifth in math, and first in science. So and that's in, that includes the other towns as well, but that is clearly a are are we getting worse? Are are we not improving? When we, if if we're at a much higher level in ELA Math and Science, and then we get to the high school taking the SAT and we're dropping down to the bottom of the derg, that would, that would be an alarming.
Yeah, keep in mind, it's not apples to apples, and the state really advises us not to do those kinds of comparisons because the content and the assessment is so different. They're very, very different.
Well, no, but that that's not, that's not, I recognize they're different, but here's the problem. The state has chosen these two metrics to determine where you are. And so if they choose, you know, SBACK for the elementaries and SATs for the for the, you know, high school kids. I presume that's because we wouldn't be giving the SAT to elementary school students, but the fact of the matter is, they've selected these metrics. And in these metrics, one would think that if we do well at the elementary level, uh, when we get to the high school level, we would be doing well in a lot of other things, and that would cause us to do well on the SATs at some point. I mean, one would think that you're learning the kind of building blocks in elementary school you need for middle high school. But we appear to be falling off a cliff, and it's not just sixth grade. That used to be the thing. It used to be when they got to middle school, that they sort of fell off a cliff after doing extremely well at at the elementary level in terms of their standardized tests. Now they're falling off a cliff for the entirety of high school. And I don't know, there may be some COVID hangovers in here, but even so, this is, this is really not a good result.
I do want to caution you, the SAT is not aligned to our standards. The smarter balance and the next generation science assessments are. The SAT is a college board developed with a whole other purpose for college admissions from decades ago that was adopted by the state after they did implement smarter balance for grade eleven. And the reason it was adopted by the state is there was a push from constituents that there were too many assessments for eleventh graders, because they, you know, have AP, and they're going to do SAT, and now you're going to do smarter balance and then GFS. So the compromise from the state was to enter into a contract with College Board.
Well, I I understand that, but the question is, I mean, we could question whether the state made the right choice or didn't make.
No, I'm just saying it's not, it's it's, our state standards are not the standards aligned to the SAT.
Well, I understand that, but unless the SAT is way off the mark in terms of what it seeks to do, which is determine whether or not you're going to be successful in college. That's what they've always said the purpose of the SAT is. So the question is, why are state standards not addressing, why are not state standards achieving the same results, success at the next level? Instead, they seem to be achieving something else, and then they're using a test that doesn't track the state standards to measure it. I mean, fundamentally, that makes no sense. I I have a hard time believing that there are any educators at the state, if that's what they've done. If they said, we're going to build standards to the moon, but we're going to test you based on your ability to get to Mars, what are we talking about?
Keep in mind, this was not the State Department of Education. These were legislators that enacted.
Oh, never mind. I understand.
I just wanted you to understand that.
I I understand. Nobody's property is safe from the legislature's concession. Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Teresa, is there any way to know? I know that a lot of the schools, as you mentioned before, are not, uh, requiring. So kids used to take Kaplan courses and they did SAT prep study. Do we know how many, there are way to know if the kids who are taking the SAT are saying, I'm not going to take Kaplan, I'm not going to take the other prep course. I'm not even going to study because I know the seven schools I'm applying to are not, don't care about it.
We can survey the kids, like, for example, Harvard didn't require test scores.
So what I'm hearing from the kids that I talked to is, I'm taking it. If I do well, I'm going to submit it.
Exactly.
Well.
They don't stress over it.
They don't require it. So.
Angela, you're you're right on the money.
So that number may not be, maybe skewed just because, not that our kids can't do it, but they're going, I don't have to do it.
That's, thank you for sharing that.
Can we follow up on how many that might be?
Yes, I'm happy to have us survey the students, what their intentions are and what they value or don't value about SAT. And the research on what colleges they're applying to, um, and whether that needed. Because colleges are finding that a student can have a poor result on an SAT, and they do very well in college. Don't, I don't want to dismiss that reality.
Well, whether SAT scores are relevant or not, to what particular college you're applying to, that's okay. But to Greg's point, we are ranked, like it or not. We are ranked by our, by these scores in the state on, um, you know, on the elementary level, on the secondary level. So in the SATs and in the, um, you know, the other testing. So, um, no, I think when, I hate to say this, but when people are looking to, in district, they're going to look at our ranking. Well, you know.
And I think it depends on what ranking you're considering, because we we're highly regarded as a great district to get an education.
Well, I I understand that, but I don't know what people saw. When people decide what town they want. I don't know what they look at, but I do know what's in the real estate section of the New York Times, and it's the SAT scores, the average SAT scores for the state and the average SAT scores for the profiled community. So I I don't know if that matters to anyone. Uh, it sounds to me like the SAT scores are almost irrelevant for our purposes, because if if they're not aligned to our curriculum, and if they don't measure how we did in the curriculum, I mean, what's the purpose for a standardized test? It's to see whether or not you were successful in delivering instruction in the curriculum that you set out. So you're not really measuring the abilities of students. You're measuring whether or not we have taught them the things that our curriculum sets. So if, so aside from the point that the that College Board SAT results have nothing to do with what we're teaching. So maybe this, maybe this is nice information, but it doesn't help us. The question is, are they relevant in any respect that we need to worry about?
Well, we we are worried, and we're taking it very seriously. Like I said, we've definitely partnered with Horizon to increase efforts um, for students to be prepared for the SAT.
I I don't think anyone's arguing that it's a wonderful district to to send your children to. But obviously, the aspects are an important aspect to our district and to the state and the expectations. So I think that the concern is, is making sure that we're following through each year to get better. And so if that's not happening, then the concern is, is what's missing and what what are we not doing collectively? But that to me is the bigger question. It has nothing to do with the classrooms and what's going on with our students, but it seems to me to be a bigger.
No, Jen, I think that's a hundred percent correct, right? And we can argue about whether or not the SAT, for example, matters or shouldn't matter. But again, I would submit that everybody in the state also plays the same game. So the realities for our kids are the same realities that every other student that took that test faces, whether they studied, didn't study, whether they got, um, they took it again or didn't take it again, whether you live here, whether you live in Westport, whether you live in Windsor Locks, everybody did the same things, right? So to me, I think it does matter. Um, I think it's a, it's a data point that we should pay attention to. I think it does speak to the college and career readiness, or at least the college readiness, let's say, that our students are leaving us with. Um, and I think that we have room to grow, and I think that we should take that number serious. The SBACK even more so, because to Jen's point, yes, that is tied to our curriculum, and you can't outrun inadequate growth. So if our kids aren't making year-over-year growth. inadequate growth. So if our kids aren't making year over year growth, that really comes home to roost. And I think we see that in really clear terms when I look at this, these results, right? Um, our students' performance actually declines over time. And I think that's something that's a a big concern of certainly of mine. Um, and I don't want to live or die by test scores or or try to make that the the altar that we should worship at as a district. However, I am in no way prepared to say that they don't matter. And I think that they are a way for us to understand our effectiveness. There are data points that we should look at along with other data points. And we talked with our data team, talked about the importance of having multiple lenses of data, right? And there's lots of other things to look at as well. But um, our math performance in particular is a concern to me. And when we talk about equity and we talk about giving kids the best opportunities, having good SAT scores will open more doors than will close. And there's no greater way to provide equity for our kids in my mind than giving them a solid academic foundation. And I think that if we're serious about doing the job well, we're serious about leveling the playing field for all kids, then um we need to really focus on making sure that we're preparing our kids as well, if not better than others around us. Otherwise, I think we're not doing um our kids a service again. And I think that's something that we're going to have to reckon with as an administrative team moving forward. This is not a new problem, but it is one that I don't think we should continue to say, oh, well, it's just the way it is. I think we think about it.
Please.
I think it's really, really important that we talk about what this test means and what we're doing to 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 move forward. I have a strong belief that in a community like ours, with the support that we get from our board and our towns, our scores can and should be higher and must be higher. It's okay to say that without devolving into another place that I'll put to one side for one second. In a minute, I'll talk about what I think we're doing now to try to move the needle on that and what we need to keep doing. But the test is not important to everybody anymore. It's still important to a lot of our students, a lot of our parents, our community, this board, our educators, it's still important to a lot of people. Now, the benchmarks on the SAT, we heard that word before, they're set by the College Board at four eighty in English Language Arts for a junior when they take the test and five thirty in math. The College Board doesn't pull those numbers out of thin air. It's a statistical predictive tool and it predicts what it predicts, but no more. The predictive power it has is if you score a four eighty, that is a strong correlation that you can earn a C or above in an introductory college course in the ELA zone. And if you earn a five thirty or above on math, that's a strong predictive um notion that you will earn a C or above on an introductory college math course. We should care about that. We should care whether our kids, when they go to college, can earn a C or above in introductory courses. We don't want to blink uh or hide from this. Now, I would also say the healthiest way to talk about it is to talk not just about comparing us with other places, which is fine. It's a reality that we have to embrace, but that alone can become poison. In my experience, the most successful conversations turn on student growth and how we're taking each kid and moving them from September to June towards towards the benchmark. Right now in our school, our math and our English teachers um at the high school have our ninth graders and tenth graders take a test called Horizons, which Dr. Goslin and Dr. DeBrito supported us in getting and purchasing. It is designed to have a predictive, very strong correlation between how you do on that practice test and how you'll do on the real SAT. So now we have that data earlier than we ever did before in ninth and 10th grade. Our teachers can look at that and say, hey, here are the blind spots for our kids in this area of math, this area of English and reading. And then they can try to shore those up. Now, the game is not to turn ourselves into a test prep academy. Uh, we're not Stanley Kaplan, but we also know that if kids don't practice these tests in a wholesome way, they're not going to get over on. So when our teachers look at the student data on these practice tests and say, oh, we have a problem with part of algebra or statistics or uh comprehending nonfiction documents. They can work those things into their curriculums with kids and give them extra help when, when, when it makes sense. That's going on right now, but it hasn't come to full fruition in the scores that we see. I don't think it's foreboding for us to talk about scores and not hide from them and be accountable and say that we're not afraid of accountability and we're not. We have work to do. You know, I will own that as the principal of this building. And I've said to our teachers, what we want is urgency without anxiety for our kids. Urgency is the absence of complacency. And we want a safe space to encounter sometimes bad news. And that's what we're trying to make for our practitioners. We can get together just like a room full of doctors who are trying to figure out what happened. What, we gave that medicine that didn't cure the patient, let's talk about it. That's where we are. And I want to assure the board that we will keep you posted on what we're doing and we do appreciate the support from Central Office and Dr. DeBrito uh with the outside consultancies and also the space to work with our teachers here and help them move forward on this in a way that's, that's, that's good for kids. And we we say to our kids, you know, your best is going to be good enough. And they're all going to have a different sense of where they want to go in the future, but it's not unhealthy for us to have an outside check on what we're trying to do and use that as one of the, one of the measures we take on on our mission. I'm sorry if I'm talking too much, but this was just so important. I wanted you to know that it has our attention. We think about it a lot. Um, and we want to to move these scores for the benefit of our community and our kids and we care. Thank you.
No, actually you didn't talk too much. Thank you very much. It was, it was important, Dr. Shells. Really appreciate it. Okay. Do we have any other thoughts or questions? Press results. I think it's very helpful for us to understand why are, why they are, how they're aligned. We used to actually talk about that a long time. We haven't done it recently, so maybe this is a good way to introduce this topic and keep returning to it. Um, in the old days, we used to have one board meeting a month. It's a business meeting and one that was a education committee meeting and the education committee was committee of the whole. I don't know if that's very effective for the education committee, committee of the whole, but it doesn't mean we still don't need education. Yeah, at board level and also at the committee level. Committee's doing some really hard to do work. And so it's, it's nice if they can have a preview of some of its things, I think, so that they can bet things and ask questions before it necessarily comes here. I think that would be helpful. Uh, but in any event, thank you very much. Um. I guess we're on to a community presentation series on the elementary schools. We recall last time we talked about the issues related to our buildings and so there was some discussion internally about whether or not we could, how the best to deal with this. And I think the superintendent's going to tell you about that. So Dr. Goslin, I'll leave it to you.
Ben, can you pull up the um, the document from the folder called primary priorities and show on the screen? So do you have the packet, Andy? Well, if you don't have it, that's fine. No worries. So uh in the board packet, there's a document called primary priorities. Uh, it's a colorful little graphic there. Um, and it kind of lays out what we're hoping to um put together as a um traveling educational um roadshow for our parents and for the broader school community. So um I got to give Nicole credit for the catchy title, primary priorities. Um, but we wanted to have an opportunity to um spend some time at each school, talking to parents and having an open dialogue and conversation, learning from them um what their thoughts and ideas are um about the the future of our elementary schools as we're facing some um some concerns in terms of the the physical um schools themselves and then other dimensions of what makes it a outstanding uh elementary program. So we decided that it probably makes sense to to break this down into small chunks so we don't overwhelm people and we're not there all night. Um, and so we have some really targeted focus conversations. So uh the first uh round of meetings um with our families will sit around facilities where we'll have an opportunity to share some of the concerns that we know. Um, and we've talked about many of these at FNO. Um, and even at some of our other meetings here, um, that's some of our weather events and whatnot. Um. But we do have issues that are facing all three of our buildings um on the facility side of things. And so uh we need to make some real um decisions and come to to some conclusions around what do we want to do to invest in fixing these things, uh what people want to see in their buildings. Um, and so we want to just have an open dialogue with parents um to have that conversation um and be transparent about the state of some of our facilities. Uh, the next round of um community conversations will focus on safety and security. And um each one of these will start at Washington Primary School. Uh, then we'll go to booths free and then we'll go to Burnham. And the schedule is laid out there, although the facilities, um, you know, the change of date at Burnham, um, I heard from Curtis Reed that he has a conflict on the fifteenth, and so we're going to do it on, on the fourteenth. So I'll revise that and send that out to folks as well. Um, but then we'll, we'll have a chance to talk about safety and security. Um, again, that will be a discussion around best practices and safety and security. Uh, it will not be a deep dive into any of our own um capabilities or tactics. We never reveal that information publicly. Um, we like to keep our security planning um pretty close to the vest to keep our kids safe. Um, but we also are always looking at as to how we can enhance this and how we can continue to improve that. In fact, some of us are going to a safety um and security um event tomorrow to learn more about those issues. Um, then we'll spend some time um talking in February about teaching and learning, about what our program looks like. Um, what are some of the best practices in in elementary education? What do parents want um from their schools? And this was one of the ways that we ended up with our uh Spanish program, for example, and also um listening to families that had some concerns. And I think Steve and the test data, uh, they were right about um some of the the multi-age classrooms over at at um at Burnham School. And so uh we had some of these last year, but we want to continue that in an even bigger way this year. Um, listening and learning from folks in terms of what they're hoping to uh see in their educational programs for their children. The last uh series for parents will focus on enrichment opportunities, the ones that we currently have and the ones that uh parents would like to see for their children uh to round out their child's education. I am a huge proponent of enrichment programs. In every school or district that I've ever been in, I've added significant um after-school programming to elementary schools and they were a game changer for families and for kids. And so um I think that we can really, I think, come together as a community and think about what are some of those ways we can add um even more for our kids um after school and beyond. And then the last um session will be for the community at large. So the first four really to target is parents of those schools. And the last um session, session number five, is a community Q and A that we'll have here at Chapag in in May. What we will have an opportunity for folks to come with questions and answer and we'll try to provide answers um as we hear from the community about the um the future of the district, um concerns, likes, areas for growth. Um, we want to hear it all. Um, we just really want to be transparent and have an open dialogue with all of the stakeholders. Like I said, starting with our parents and scaling up to the um the community at large. Uh, any questions?
Just one quick question. Are, are you inviting the community to the first four, even though they're geared toward parents?
I mean, we're not going to be checking people's.
No, no, I mean, are you going to advertise it? Are you going to, are you going to send it out the same way?
I mean, I, I think our, our target audience really is parents. Um, we want parents to have the opportunity to to talk without um other people who maybe are energized about certain priorities or imagined priorities coming and shutting them down. So
Okay, thank you.
Really should be focused on parents, but again, we're not going to be shutting people a lot up.
I'll go just to that Alex and who else had their hand up.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we could possibly revise this to say that uh childcare will be available. Oh, I know there's a
Yep.
Two Rock City high school students who will happily volunteer.
Wonder who they are.
So in a particular household, yes.
So Dr. Shells and company, we might have to um prevail upon you for some community service hours if um.
We were talking about you.
Well.
Get the man a light bulb, please.
Um. Yeah, I mean, and it'd be great for them dogs. It does offer like about fifteen opportunities for them to pick up some N S E Ls. So um but yeah, Justin, we'll make that revision. Um, and again, this is just the overall schedule, but um, you know, go out with the communication explaining it.
Simple question, what time?
So Doug's what I want to kind of um workshop around with folks tonight. Um. I mean, my inclination is seven. That tends to work good for people, but some people might say, no, that's too late, especially with kids, maybe six. Others might say, well, that's too close to sports or dinner. So I'm interested to get some feedback in terms of what time before we set an actual um time, but we'll try to keep it consistent, try to keep Wednesdays consistent other than the one night at Burnham. Um, but also like try to keep times consistent. So any ideas?
What's the duration or what are you anticipating the duration of each meeting to be about an hour?
I mean, yeah, we're going to be organic. I mean, um, so if people want to stay longer than that, we certainly will, but I think an hour makes sense.
Well, then what about meeting halfway, you know, six thirty to seven thirty? It's before bedtime, you know, potentially you can feed the kids a little earlier.
Does that tend to work for folks?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was actually exactly about to say that because I've got two very little ones and I'm going seven o'clock, like no one wants to.
No, yeah.
Six thirty to seven thirty, I think is is a happy medium.
We've got a little food and then, and it would be great because I know a lot of parents too, like we need one parent at home and it would be great to get both here. Like a little bit earlier.
Makes sense to me. Anyone else have any thoughts?
We do have, as Stephanie was just saying, if we want a parent at home, but that parent might want to do it, we have a good option.
So we will, um, and I don't know if it'll be interactive or be a one-way Zoom, um, but we'll, we'll try to make sure that um we have at least a one-way so that people can um at least consume it. But um if there is a way to make it interactive, we'll try to do that too. Maybe um we can say, we can promise that we'll be able to take all your questions if you're virtual. But um maybe we could pull my cue of virtual participants.
I think if you don't mind, I think if you have an interactive Zoom, I think you're going to push it way past seven thirty. I think it should be one way. Um, if there is one parent that is in attendance in person, but the more interactive you have, the longer it's going to last.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. And my personal preference is and personal belief, I guess, is that I think if people want to come and have a conversation, they really need to show up. You know, I think it's too easy to sit back, you know, and make comments from Gina Gallery. Um, and sometimes it distorts or twists the event too. So, you know, I think that it makes sense to me um to have parents come in attendance and we can again provide a one-way, you know, broadcast through um whether it's YouTube Live or Zoom or something like that, but we can have just the webinar where it just goes out in one direction.
Well, you know, the, the only problem with that is, is if you, when you're sitting at home watching it on Zoom, everything is an abstraction. When you're sitting in that building, talking about that building, especially for the first one, it's a lot more helpful to be in the building. And I, I'm afraid that if we, if we offer a Zoom dial-in, then you're going to have a lot of people do that and not show up. And we're going to miss the point on explaining why we're there, especially with the first one. I, I really think you should seriously consider making it in-person. But anyway, that's just my thought. Go ahead, uh.
I know it's your intent, so I, but I just want to stress the importance of making sure that when these dates go out that before each one that we get an agenda out for parents. So that way they can also have an idea really what is facility theme, what do each of those entail and maybe come with questions ahead of time.
Sure.
You know, because we've talked about before how even us at a board, maybe we consume something immediately. We don't really have questions until two days later.
Right.
Because if it's the first time you're hearing it or reviewing the material, it's hard to nail that down. So just the more pre-communication so these events, I think, could be better.
I agree.
Also, um prior to that first date, I believe we should have more accurate numbers when we're discussing facilities and improvements that we want.
You won't. You won't because to get, to get accurate numbers, it's going to take us a long period of time and they have to spend a lot of money uh to get an architect, do plans of what we're doing. We have to figure out what we're doing. I don't think, I don't think we can talk about numbers. It's not, this is too early to talk about numbers. We need to get a sense of what the community wants to do before we can get to the issue of what it's going to cost. Because if we, if we use the numbers that we've gotten from the architect, they're going to be two sets of numbers and it's going to be confusing. And, 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 and it's not based on actual plans. So those numbers are likely not accurate.
But you're presenting different options to the community. And in order for the community to make an accurate decision, you need to present accurate information.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're going to be able to make a decision.
And I think, I think we're a, a ways off from even looking at options, right? I think right now it's understanding the scope of the issue at hand, what are the challenges? Um, and then from there, work toward what might be do as a next step. And that next step might be. And that next step might be, hey, let's get the, a building committee together. That building committee might say, hey, let's do a whole nother study, you know, and come up with plans and numbers, right? Um, but I don't want to ever be in the position where I feel like we're running faster than everyone else is. And people don't even understand what we're talking about. You know, I, I've run into people that said, I had no idea that, you know, there were problems at this school or that school. And so I don't think it's fair to, you know, even take another step down any road before we slow down, bring people into the, the conversation and do this with people. I don't want to do anything to people.
You see, the, the idea is to try to bring them up to where, not quite where we are, but as close as we can get them to where we are in understanding the problem.
So start at baseline for the community members and start right at the bottom and slowly work our way up. And I think that that's a great idea.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, the, the goal is at the end of the day, when we finally get to talking about options or where we want to go, they will at least know all of the background, why brought us there, as opposed to why are you coming here asking us to build a school?
Thank you. And that's exactly what my point is.
I'm sorry I wasn't as articulate.
People have left their conclusions and have heard all kinds of rumors. And I think we need to pump the brakes and say like, let's stop.
Thank you.
And let's bring people into, you know, into what's, what's even wrong in the first place, what our challenges are.
Thank you very much.
What I'm hoping is that, again, we can get together as grownups and have grownup conversations about the challenges that we face. And as a community, work together and say, here's what we think, you know, should be our next step. But like, let's, let's let people learn first and, and come together and, and understand, you know. I, I think we're just moving faster than anybody is even ready for in, in some ways. And so I think it just makes a lot of sense to, to slow down and say like, let's make sure that everyone's listening to it.
And just to Victoria's point as well, like, you know, say for that first meeting for facilities, are these going to be all of these topics as it relates to just that school? Or are you giving a bird's eye view of the whole district to each school? I don't know what like the intent is for like that parent conversation.
Um, yeah, and I haven't fully fleshed that out. Um, and we could do either one. Um, so I'll have to think on that a little bit. Um, I think there's, if you just focus on the single school, then I think you're not seeing the, all of our issues in its totality. Uh, but I also don't over want, oh, don't want to overwhelm people either. Um, so let me think on that a little bit. I haven't had a chance to really think about the school.
Um, it may be, maybe, uh, having the opportunity, because you only, only have an hour, right, to discuss that to really just focus on the school that we're in, in that moment, whether you're at Washington Primary School, talk about Washington Primary School. And then if parents are really interested in wanting to know what's going on in Booth and WPS or Burnham, they can, you know, because everyone has all that free time.
Yeah. Maybe what you want is just a, just a, a brief mention that we have similar problems at the same, at the same extent at all of our schools, at the, at the other two elementary schools. Uh, we, we did make a presentation on that tonight. We'd be here for another two hours. But you're welcome to ask us and we'll definitely provide you more information.
I think it's good to just keep a little perspective too, because if you go to one school and just talk about what they're, they, that community may feel like their school has all of these things.
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, did that in a vacuum. Do you want, are all the elementary dealings are just, you know, just like you said, maybe some perspective?
Yeah.
Without getting.
Right. I, I think that's a good idea. Yeah. I, I think that's a good idea. I think that's, I think that would be it. Because if you, if you try to do a three-school presentation, you're either going to short the school you're in, or you're going to be there all month.
Sure. And, and we don't want to invite it to be.
Yeah. Uh, and John, Mary and then John.
What, let, how about we give everybody the schedule, the whole schedule? And then say, if you want to, we're going to mostly address this school at, on this date. But if you want to know about the other schools in depth, come to the other presentation.
That's a good point. That's an excellent idea. John?
I know this is pretty, this is a great idea, first of all. And it's pretty complex. But I'm looking at it from, from the vantage point where each one of these schools is unique to the community. So I would say invite the public, kids, people whose grandchildren are in the school now. Uh, and talking with people and finding out what, how they, how compassionate they are about their particular school. And, you know, I think, I think it'll add a why to the understanding of, you know, someone who doesn't have children in the school. They'll understand how, um, how the parents really feel about maintaining their school and.
I, I, I think that you make a good point because the other thing that concerned me about not, that's the reason I asked about the community the first time. If you get to that last meeting and, and you haven't been through the other four, then the question is, what do you know? So, but, but ma- maybe the point is the first, the first four are more telling and less. There'll be some feedback, but, but you might have to spend more of the time on presentation. I just don't know how you exclude the community from the first four and then get them to engage on the last. But I'm, but I, on the other hand, I know why you want to hear it toward parents and that's the tricky. Yeah, go ahead.
And I also think the conversation is really just about presenting the topic. It's not about schools and keeping and it's just about presenting the information. It's what, what the, what's going on with the facilities at all the three schools? What's, what, what are the concerns about safety and security? I, I, I think, I think as Mark said, it's really just about. And I think, right? Because I think otherwise if we lead by emotion, that's just.
No, you're correct.
And I think we just all need to.
This phase and then there's always time for that.
Yeah, I, I think it's just really important for all of us to just get a sense of what the schools need. And that being, and that's, that's the crux of it for me.
It, it's going to be a, nothing will be perfect, but it will, we'll figure it out as we go through this. I think we will, but I, I don't think it's ever a mistake to engage in communities that we represent, uh, and we, uh, deal with on these issues. And I think, uh, people's.
Yeah, I don't think that we can exclude the non-parents from these things. It, uh, I mean, we may not hear it towards them, but they're going to be activists from all factions. They're going to want to show up and, you know, have a, an axe to grind one way or another.
Yeah, so we're not going to be like working the velvet rope and turning people into door. And, and maybe when we open, we do just, we reaffirm that this is the purpose of the meeting, right? And so that.
Parents.
Yeah, and that this isn't going to be a, a debate.
Informational meeting primarily.
Sharing products and information.
Facts with the parents, but somehow put it, imply that the doors are open. Yeah, I, I think you also have to make clear, this is not a meeting to discuss how to solve problems. This is a meeting to understand where we are, what the problem, trying to bring you up to a level of understanding. So that when we do come, when we do get into a discussion about solving problems, you have all the background and, and your knowledge. I think that's what we're trying to do is to educate and we want questions. But we're, but, but if, if it turns into a, you can't have this or you mustn't do this, it's going to be a complete nightmare.
Yeah. Are we going to have this, uh, is this going to be copied event? Are we going to have this so that it's on, on the, uh, our webpage? People can go who couldn't have the meeting.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we'll film it and.
Like someone's talking to me?
No, no, because that occurs to me, you know, somebody's can't do Wednesday night, but would like to hear what happened.
Yeah.
Um, it'd be nice to be able to say, you know, I've got an hour. I'm going to sit down and listen to what they said about safety at Burnham.
Alex, we have to be 110% transparent, right? And I think that if people can do that, you know, they feel they're included, they feel they have the actual information, uh, you know. Like I said, this is all about sharing facts, sharing the, the realities as we know them at this point with the, with the community. And if people really consume it later on, you know, filming it so they can see that.
So we, we do have a website posted on it.
Um, I just have a couple of brief concerns with, with these meetings, um, that potentially, you know, could cause a problem. You have, uh, people that are, you're talking about facilities and updates to different schools. And we're starting at ground zero, just giving them basic information. But I think you might have taxpayers coming to these, this meeting as well. And I think that if we want to keep it to an hour, I think it might be very difficult because I think that people want to know what we're talking about as far as their dollars are concerned. And, um, so you might have more people than just the parents showing up at the meetings and it might go longer than an hour. Just putting it out there, I just feel that that might be a, an issue.
Well, what, you may be right. Two things on that we can do. One, one of them is we, we could again, make it clear that we're not talking about dollars and cents. But the other thing we can do is we can try to skew the questions and things to the parents first. Because they're the ones that have the shelf lifetime, where they got to get out of there, uh, and, and get their pincet bed. So there, there may be ways to, to, to keep it. I mean, I don't, if it goes late, it goes late, but I would hate to have parents not able to ask questions because they have to leave to take care of their kids. And I think everyone will understand that's the.
And, and I, I really be. Getting the, the, the tone of this is really important. I don't want taxpayers showing up or, you know, taxpayer interest groups even were showing up and shutting down parents, right? And I think that we've heard from parents that, that have said, I can't even listen or understand or, you know, share any ideas or thoughts because it instantly goes to this, you know, this side versus that side fighting. And so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity for people to come and learn in a civil way, um, without any flagellants. Like we're so far away from that part of any discussion yet, really. We may get there, you know, in the future, but the most important part right now is hear the facts as we see them. Let's take this, you know, one small step at a time. Let's learn what the problems are and then we'll, we'll, you know, together and, and figure it out.
Uh, that, another idea of what we can do, we can tell people this is, this, this particular presentation is geared towards the parents. But we will have, the, the next wave will have community members that will, that will have a presentation for. So they know that we're not trying to just shut them off.
Yeah.
But, but this one is geared towards the parents.
And I'm not saying they're not welcome, but I think we just.
Right, that's. And if we tell them, we're going to do, we're going to let you talk the next time and let you see what's going on. It's not that we want to keep you out, but we want the parents to have, you know, a, a presentation for themselves.
Do you want board representation at the meeting?
I mean, that'd be wonderful. Yeah, and I don't know how you guys want to split it up. I mean, obviously it comes for my thoughts as well, so, um. End of the day, it wouldn't be the worst if we received the message, you know, post the meeting. But, um, I really don't want it to be a board meeting per se. That has a different.
I'm happy to show up.
May, maybe representation from the towns where it's being held might be, you know, um, enough.
We're going to have to find you some hobbies.
You, you, you may have to post these.
And, and it won't be in the deliberation. So again, you know, uh, even if there are board members going to gather, we're not going to have any semblance of deliberation.
Okay. Any further thoughts about this? Yes, Mary. Okay, well, I'll, I'll give you a minute. Any further thoughts about this, this special item? Mark, thank you very much for organizing this. I think this is a, uh, it's a very important thing. Mary, now.
I have such trouble hearing when people are standing up there and what they're saying. And Nicole, I love you dearly, but you have a very short, very quiet voice. And it's very hard to hear. Is there anything we can do to amplify it so that we can all hear?
I don't know. I mean, we, 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 you know, we do have a television studio. We do have a planetarium. We, we have millions of dollars and yet we don't have a microphone at the meeting. And we, we, we really need, either that or we're going to have to bring a table right to the end here across and close the circle. And whoever speaks sits at the table because they've got to be closer. Because to be honest, the ventilation sound here has been decreased massively from what it, it used to be. But, you know, I can't hear what people are saying. It's, it's a, it's a problem. Uh, is, is there any way the next board meeting, we can have a, a person to speak to? So when someone stands at that lecture and we can actually hear them. I, I would rather turn the Zoom off and put an end to it. If that's what's causing it, we can't have someone speak in the room.
Yeah, no, I agree. And so we'll have, um, Vic and Patrick and Ben, um, kind of test out some options. Um, but I agree with you. We definitely have to have that amplification. It is really hard to hear.
Either that or we need a better acoustics, a room with better acoustics. This room has horrible acoustics.
Yeah.
Carpeted, it's filled with books and, and acoustical tiles. So there's no carry of any sound except loud.
Move into the studio.
All right. Thank you very much. Unless there's anything else, and if no one has an objection, we'll clear this meeting adjourned at nine twenty-nine.